Good evening. Welcome to the North Penn School District's Board of School Directors 1,000th Meeting, October 18th, 2012. Gentlemen, you want to run the show? Rick, could you get the lights?
Hello and welcome to this North Penn News Update. I'm Emily Milliron. Congratulations to the current and former North Penn School Board members on this, their 1,000th Action Meeting. Since the formation of the North Penn School District in 1966, 83 community members have been elected by their constituents to serve on the Board. 16 of those former Board members and Board Secretaries, who have a combined 160 years of service, are in attendance tonight for this momentous event. Thank you to each of you for your time and dedication to the North Penn School District over the past 46 years. Last week was Fire Prevention Week throughout the North Penn community. At York Avenue Elementary School, members of the Fairmount Fire Company were on hand demonstrating the use of foam while fighting a fire. The firefighters also talked to the students about the importance of having an escape plan in their home, as well as the proper procedures of what to do in the event of a fire. The award-winning North Penn Transportation Department's Bus Safety Program is once again on tour of the district's 13 elementary schools. With an Olympics-themed presentation, the drivers teach the bus safety rules to the primary grade students through puppetry, humor, and song. The Bus Safety Program has been performed for over 10 years in the North Penn School District. Congratulations to seniors Katie Marino and Kyle Mayfield for being crowned as the 2012-2013 Homecoming King and Queen. Homecoming festivities this year during the North Penn High School Spirit Week included a pep rally, a pregame tailgating party, and the annual crowning of the King and Queen at halftime of the Knights football game. Over 40 German exchange students from Salzgeeter and Aalen have completed their two-week visit to the North Penn area. The students attended classes with their hosts, visited many of the historic sites in the Philadelphia area, and most importantly, made memories to last a lifetime. The exchange students, their advisors, the host families, and the International Friendship Committee gathered together for one last dinner before their departure back to Germany. Eight individuals and four teams were recently inducted into the North Penn Alumni Athletic Hall of Fame. Six former North Penn High School athletes and two former coaches were recognized for their contributions to the North Penn High School athletic programs. In addition, the boys' swimming teams from 1997 to 2000 were inducted along with their coaches for their four state championships in a row. Earlier in the week, class of 1962 alumni, Dr. Gus Rosenberg, was named the 2012 North Penn High School Lifetime Achievement recipient. Dr. Rosenberg spoke to members of the student body about his unconventional career path that led him to develop the artificial heart. Dr. Rosenberg is currently a professor of Surgery and Bioengineering and the Chief of the Artificial Organs Division at the Penn State Milton S. Hershey Medical Center and College of Medicine. You can watch Dr. Rosenberg's presentation, the induction ceremony, and all of our other programming 24 hours a day at mptv.npenn.org. That is all for this edition of North Penn News. I'm Emily Milliron. Have a great night.
Welcome to our regularly-scheduled Action Meeting. This meeting is being videotaped for community cable channels. Individuals attending this meeting and intending to speak to the Board should be aware that they are being videotaped. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania's Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the Board during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the Board come to the microphone, state their name and address, and sign the Audience of Citizens logbook. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments. To allow time for all those who wish to speak to the Board, the Board President may ask the individual to yield the microphone to the next speaker. And now, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Once again, good evening and welcome. As we do sometimes, we get a chance to start off our meetings with proclamations and recognitions of some of the great achievements in North Penn, and tonight we have such a night. So, Dr. Deeter?
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight is a very special meeting, as it is meeting number 1,000 of the North Penn School District's Board of School Directors. The first meeting was held on December 30th, 1965, in the cafeteria of the North Penn High School, which at the time was located at the place that is now known as Pendale Middle School. There were 17 individuals present, including nine Board members who were split between three areas of the district, the north, the central, and the south. Almost 47 years later, we're celebrating this milestone meeting. During these years, both exciting and difficult decisions were made by members of the North Penn School Board to enhance the North Penn School District. As you can imagine, things were very different today than they were in 1965. However, all North Penn School District Board members, past and present, governed with the same purpose in mind: to make the North Penn School District a thriving community for people to live, work, and learn. It's my honor to recognize 14 influential Board members and two Board Secretaries from the past 47 years who are with us tonight. Unfortunately, there are former Board members who cannot be with us tonight, as some are deceased and some are no longer living in the area. Between the Board members and Board Secretaries present tonight, there are close to 160 years of service among them. The time and dedication of these individuals is admirable. The excellence for which North Penn is known began with some of these Board members in 1966, when the district united as one, and continued through the years, as they helped build schools, create jobs, form policies and regulations, implement educational and extracurricular programs that allowed North Penn School District students and staff members to reach their highest potential. The North Penn School District and North Penn community are forever grateful for the years of service. They have helped shape North Penn to be one of the leading school districts in the state and nation today. So it's with great pleasure that we recognize the following individuals, and I will introduce them in chronological order, starting with their first year of service. I'd ask the individual please rise, and when I'm reading the time of service, then be seated again, and as I finally get through the full list, we will then ask all members to please come forward and circulate to all members of Administration and Present School Board. First, we have John Wireman, serving on the Board from 1955, where he started on Hafield's Board, and then to 1970, on North Penn's Board. My list here said that Robert Ressinger was planning to be here this evening. I don't think he was able to make it. Is Mr. Ressinger here this evening? He did serve on the Board from 1966 to 1967. Next person I have in chronological order is our Board Secretary from 1966 to 1991, Gregory Golazewski served on the Board from 1973 to 1978. Thomas Penn served on the Board from 1975 to 1981. Dorothy Curry served on the Board from 1975 to 1989. Patricia Smith served on the Board from 1977 to 1982, and then again for a second time period from 1987 to 1991. Don Hill served on the Board from 1977 to 1987, and then again for a second time period from 1995 to 2011. Patricia Shields served on the Board from 1988 to 1994. Ken Weir served as Board Secretary from 1991 to 1997. Teresa Porcaski served on the Board from 1991 to 1995, and again for a second term from 1998 to 2010. Donna Mangle served on the Board from 1991 to 2003. Vicky Scher served on the Board from 1993 to 2001. H. Bruce Gordon served on the Board from 1999 to 2003. Joseph Walsh served on the Board from 2005 through 2009. Josephine Charnock served on the Board from 2010 to 2011. We also have our Present School Board members. John Schilling started his service in 1995 and is presently serving. Vince Strapinski started his service in 1997 and is presently serving. Frank O'Donnell started his service in 1997 and is presently serving. Tim Kerr started his service in 2001 and is presently serving. Rick Meniskalka started his service in 2003 and is presently serving. Steve Lattick, who couldn't be here this evening, also started his service in 2003 and is presently serving. Joe Sullivan started his service in 2009 and is presently serving. Carolyn Murphy started her service in 2011 and is presently serving. And Sue Leonard started her service in 2011 and is presently serving. Thank you again for your incredible contributions to the North Penn School District. If we could, please, have you come forward, have the entire Administration and School Board recognize you.
There's a lot of history in this room. 160 years of combined service is an amazing amount of time, and it is an amazing evolution for the school district for all these years. So... All right, we're going to move forward with our agenda this evening for the 1,000th meeting, October 18th. Tonight, at this point in the meeting, we're going to have Audiences, Citizens, and anyone wishing to speak to the meeting, please feel free to step forward, state your name and address, and give us a call.
My name is Alison Waugh, live at 236 Lower Valley Road in North Wales. I'm here tonight, as are the other parents of children in the AM kindergarten at North Wales Elementary. If you guys could stand up. We're here tonight because we're dissatisfied with the way things are right now, and we'd like to see some change. There are 27 kids in the class right now, and they're all under the direction of one teacher. This is entirely too many kids to be in one class together. We want to see these classes made into two separate sections. Instruction time is lost due to the logistics of having that many kids together, especially when they're five and six years old. The problem is time. Everything takes more time than it should, and that takes away from the instruction. The weaker learners aren't getting the additional time they need from the teacher. The independent learners are not being challenged, and the children that are in the middle are just not having enough time to finish their tasks. This is a critical time in the education of our children. What they learn in kindergarten becomes the foundation for their future education. We need to make the decision to invest in our kids now and lay the groundwork so they won't fall behind and need additional costly services later in their education. We're not happy with the way the class is overcrowded, and we want it separated into two sections. We want to see this change. This is what we want for our kids, and this is why we're all here tonight. We want this to happen now, before the school year goes on any farther, and we want it to happen as soon as possible. Thank you.
You willing to make a minute or a second of this concern?
Absolutely.
Would you be able to say that? I mean, being a representative of the group, we can ask someone else to figure what you want to talk to.
Thank you. Will that be happening soon?
It will be.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll set it up tomorrow else.
Say it again?
I can contact you tomorrow.
There's 27 kids in the class right now. Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the Board tonight, please step forward. All right, I'll move forward with recommended approval of the minutes of the 999th Action Meeting, held on September 20th, 2012, as well as the minutes of the work session held on October 9th, 2012, as circulated. Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions to the minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. I'm going to move forward with committee reports. We're going to start with Support Services. Mr. Schilling?
Thank you, Mr. Strapinski. The Support Service Committee met on September 20th and discussed the following: punch lists and contract closeouts for North Wales and general national elementary school renovation projects. It was also reported that the North Penn High School hot water heater replacement project has been completed. The Inglewood Elementary School renovations, an addition project, is in full construction mode. Phase 3 was the bulk of the work that was completed this summer and was substantially completed before school opened on September 4th. Punch lists items are being completed on the phase, and construction continues on Phase 2. Phase 2 is a sixth classroom renovation that is not currently in use. Phase 2 is expected to be completed earlier than projected. The committee also heard updates for issues concerning North Penn High School auditorium, an energy update highlighting possible performance contracting methods, a report on beginning of the year transportation items, two requests from Montgomery United Soccer Association, a tour of Montgomery Elementary School to give the committee an overview of the building condition was also done. Our next Support Service Committee meeting is going to be held on Monday, October 29th, at 6:00 PM, and we're going to be meeting at Inglewood Elementary School. End of report.
Thank you. Any questions of Support Services this evening? Next meeting's Monday at Inglewood.
That's correct.
Two Mondays from now?
27.
27? No, 27 is...
It's 29.
29, 29, yeah, 29. Education, Community, and Policy. Ms. Leonard?
That's me, thank you. At the ECP Committee meeting on October 8th, there were two topics reviewed, in addition to student travel requests. The first agenda item that evening was the 2013-14 Program of Studies changes for grades 9 through 12. Several changes to the program of studies were presented to the committee, these including dropping classes due to low enrollment, adding courses in animation and JROTC, and renaming and updating curricula content for several courses in computer programming, multimedia presentations, art, and English. Many of the courses being dropped are Advanced or Level 2 courses, for which students are choosing other options, including AP courses. Also, beginning with the class of 2017, the Graduation Project will no longer be required. However, proficiency on the Keystone exams will be required for graduation, beginning with this same class. Increasingly, the district is being asked to provide or approve electronic signatures for various reports. Consequently, a policy has been developed to define these procedures used to identify individuals authorized to provide or approve an electronic signature, as well as the documentation required to authenticate the electronic signature. This was the other agenda matter that was presented to the committee for its consideration. On the agenda this evening are the 2013-14 Program of Studies changes for grades 9 through 12, a first reading of the electronic signature policy, and student travel. The next ECP Committee meeting will be held on Monday, November 12th, at 6:30 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Leonard? Any questions to ECP this evening? North Penn Education Foundation? Ms. Murphy?
The Foundation held another successful charity luncheon this past weekend at Baco in North Wales. Close to 100 supporters enjoyed two hours of all-you-can-eat delicious selections from the restaurant's menu. The popular event raised close to $1,500, and this next charity luncheon will be February 24th at the Texas Roadhouse in Montgomeryville, so please put that on your calendar. Work has begun on the Foundation's big event of 2013, a Cinco de Mayo charity auction, obviously, on Cinco de Mayo Day, May 5th. This will be held at the Shvenkville Manor on Allentown Road. Village caterers will provide the fare for the evening, and we expect there to be dozens of exciting items to bid on. Costs will be $55 per person and $100 per couple. Over the next few months, we will provide more information on this wonderful night, where we hope to raise $15,000. The trustees have also requested innovative proposals from the North Penn staff for mid-year grant funding. The Foundation has budgeted $15,000 for this purpose, which is in addition to the $17,000 worth of grants already being funded this school year. I encourage staff to complete an application, which you can find on the website, and anyone who knows a teacher with a good idea, please have them contact Christine. A small group of trustees met this week to review the organization's bylaws to ensure that they fit the needs of the school district today. They were last reviewed about five years ago. Any changes to the bylaws will be brought to the School Board for approval, per School Board policy. If you have any questions about the Foundation, you can contact Christine Liberowski at the ESC, and again, thanks to her committee for such a wonderful luncheon on Sunday.
Hold on. Thank you. Any questions of the North Penn Education Foundation? Finance this evening. Mr. Lattick?
Yes, and what a long report it is this evening. Finance report for this evening is that there was no Finance Committee meeting in the month of September. Our next meeting is actually this Wednesday, and we're going to be covering a lot of important topics, so if anyone could make it, they should come out, because we're going to talk about the final results from the 2011-2012 finances, capital improvement planning process, as well as discussing the timing of the borrowings for future bonds. So... End of report.
Thank you. Is that the 25th? Thank you. Any questions of Finance this evening? Safe Schools?
I actually have no report, but I do want to say that I'm asking, apparently something has been going on with the Act 211 Committee, and I've talked to Diane, and Diane and I are going to attend the next Act 211 Committee. I understand it's on a Friday. I've asked two people to give me the minutes and when this meeting, the next meeting is. Kurt, if you happen to know when the next meeting is for Act 211, so Diane and I, and actually, I'm thinking...
It happens twice a year, doesn't it?
I'm sorry?
The state mandatory committee, it meets like twice a year?
I'm not sure what their actual meeting schedule is, but we can check and find out.
But the concern is around grants, and I just, we have to talk to a few people.
Correct. Oh, okay. Yeah, we had a, I was going to say Bruce was a former member. I think you can answer that question for us.
Is it twice a year?
Meets monthly.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay, all right. End of report. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Personnel this evening. Mr. Kerr?
Personnel Committee met in executive session October 2nd, 2012, from 5:00 PM to 6:00 PM, to discuss matters of personnel negotiations and potential litigation.
Thank you.
Can I say the same thing?
It's the same purpose of the committee.
I understand.
North Mako Technical Career Center. Mr. Sullivan?
Our meeting was Monday, 12th, with all of the normal business items, director reported. Gave us a report, a presentation assisted by the staff of the recruiting process that goes on with sending schools to recruit to go to VOTEC with the recruiting process. They make presentations. They have interested students take a tour of the school. They fill out a card...
Statement of interest or something.
During this program, they're interested in, and maybe if they change their mind, as you said, if they change their mind, they're not interested. And then the staff follows up with students, even the non-interested ones, to see why they're not interested, to see if there's some things that they need to make more track They send letters out to parents of interested students, and send students the application. That's the recruitment process for the school. We received the superintendent's report, in which sort of voice of concern is about the underutilized resource. The superintendents feel like they're tech schools, deep up in enrollment, taking all the programs, technical things. So they're looking for and analyzing why they feel like they're underutilized resources in the county.
You're talking about, he's a super productive record from us this year, but in prior times, you have all five superintendents, right, serving?
It rotates.
They rotate in?
It rotates. Yeah, so I try to make it...
But the North Mako Technical Career Center has some of the highest enrollment in VOTEC schools in the county, doesn't it?
Over 1,000 students.
They have over 1,000 students. There are some labs that are under-enrolled.
Yeah, there are just some pockets of, you know, labs and that we need to figure out why, why folks aren't...
Is it, you know, the changing economy?
That's one of the things we're trying to get to.
Well, we're getting stages of this. The superintendents are...
Well, the reason why I was going to ask that question is, I was on the Board when we did a curriculum renewal there before. We brought in biotech, and other things.
Those programs are doing well. Biotech's doing well.
Some of the reasons, I mean, it's a good question, and there was a bunch of reasons stated why they think it's...
Sorry about that. A bunch of reasons why they think it's being underutilized. One is, there's a stigma that if you go to a tech school, you can't go to college. So maybe there has to be a message catered to that not be, that being a fallacy.
Just go to the Bureau of Labor Statistics. White collar, blue collar, gold collar.
Right.
There's a huge difference and shift in money.
And, you know, it was mentioned that that might not just be at the student level, but at the parent level, won't allow their child to go to a tech school because they won't be able to go to college, and whatever, or whatever it is, but that's one of the things we're going to take a look at, trying to change the message. I brought up the point that we just passed an advertisement policy for the school district, and maybe the executive director or someone could reach out to the VOTEC Council, Association of Teachers of America, and sort of like advertise a message in the school, because I mean, that's what was at the heart of why I wanted to pass them, you know, to sort of like get the message out that VOTEC isn't what it was when we went to school. I mean, there's a lot of, I mean, allied health...
Things change.
Allied Health Program, there's a engineering program that gets into heavy-duty advanced mnemonics. There's all kinds of things going over there. And there were some new ideas that we were looking at, too. One of the other suggestions was that if we have some students at North Penn that are looking to go on to be mechanical engineers, well, maybe they should look at the VOTEC as an advanced lab for that, so they can get applied knowledge at a basic level, real-world knowledge. And that was one of the other things that, just because you go to VOTEC for, well, let me put it another way, you don't have to go for three years. Like, you can use it for a specific timeframe, just to get us, maybe a survey of engineering, where you spend some time in the HVAC lat or shop, and then you go to the mnemonic shop or whatever. But... But sort of, that's the strategy, sort of, you know, look at and sort of come up with different approaches to try to sell the VOTEC school.
Fair enough. I wish on luck.
And in our piece about selling the VOTEC schools, I was talking with Bob, is that we have a TV show called Inside North Monco that's run every month on our NPTV, so if we just check the district website for showtimes and details, people will be able to see what's really going on in the VOTEC and get a better idea and have, you know, maybe some of the mystique about what's going on, and some of those fallacies will go away.
Nice ideas. Thank you, Joe, very much.
Yeah.
Any questions in North Monco Technical Career Center, do I? Montgomery County Intermediate Unit. Ms. Murphy.
Because we have our meeting in September, the 3rd Wednesday, because there's also shown up, we won't meet until next week, which is our fourth, so I'm sad not to have a report this evening.
Thank you.
Don't be too sad.
Alternate revenue.
Good evening. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Josie Charnock. I'm the chairperson for the Alternative Revenue Committee. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend last Wednesday's ARC meeting, but Howard Reed, the vice chairperson, graciously provided the notes for this meeting. At that meeting, Christine Libarowski, North Penn School District Manager and School and Community Engagement, provided an update on the alumni mailings and email campaign, and the creation of the North Penn School District's Development Office. The alumni will be contacted frequently using a variety of formats to keep the school in front of the school's alumni. With regard to advertising, now that the advertising policy has passed by the North Penn School Board, thank you, the School and Community Engagement Organization will be facilitating with the superintendent, Dr. Dietrich, a number of focus groups within the district to receive feedback from parents, students, and administrators on the potential implementation of the advertising program. The advertising program will be managed by the School and Community Engagement Organization, which also is creating the Development Office. With regard to the Development Office, North Penn School District is aggressively moving forward with ARC's recommendation for the creation of this office. Dr. Dietrich has juggled resource commitments and responsibilities to allow Christine Libarowski to take the lead in this initiative. Scott Payne, founder of Knights for Life, attended the meeting and explained how he and Steve Melcher decided to start Knights for Life. The Knights have conducted beef and beers, horseshoe, wiffle ball tournaments to raise funds and engage the public. Scott Payne indicated that the Knights would like to develop a strong and formal relationship with the North Penn School District that will provide enthusiastic support for all current and former students. "Once a night, always a night" is their motto. With regard to North Penn School District finance update, Dr. Dietrich provided the ARC committee with an update of North Penn School District's stable financial situation, which has received positive budgetary movement this year with an effective reverse appeals approach for taxes as it applies to potentially underassessed properties, which generated a significant amount of revenue for the district. In other areas of note, the self-funded healthcare plan has been a success, and risk is mitigated through a stop-loss insurance policy. The proposals from the ARC committee have been vigorously pursued and supported with the approval of the advertising policy and the progress on the creation of the Development Office program/program. Dr. Dietrich also thanked the ARC committee for their service. End of report.
Thank you. Any questions of the Alternative Revenue tonight? All right, let's move forward with our superintendent's report. Dr. Dietrich.
Thank you, Mr. President. We recommend approval of changes to the program of studies for grades nine through 12 for the 2013-14 academic year, per item 65-12A through I.
Move by Mrs. Murphy, second by Mr. Schilling. Comments or questions? All those in favor? Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry, Joe?
I've seen Acting for Shakespeare being discontinued, Advanced Honors being discontinued. I hope that this is just a short-term thing, and we bring these back.
It actually has been multiple years, that's why.
Yeah, these courses have not run.
They compete against, we ran through this at the committee level, as Mrs. Leonard talked about, that you compete against the AP classes in those areas, or other things that are just as good for them, and that's the difficulty you face.
I understand, but I'm just hoping that somehow these don't get forgotten, and maybe they can get to be revived somehow, sometime now.
Different crop of kids, you never know. Interest in changes.
Yeah.
It is frustrating now when you see that. We saw that at the committee level.
Shakespeare.
Any other comments or questions? I have a recommendation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the employment agreement dated October 18th, 2012, with Diane Holben, EDD, an extension of her term as Assistant District Superintendent to April 21st, 2015. A copy of the employment agreement is on file in the office of the superintendent.
So moved. Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mr. O'Donnell. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations.
Recommend acceptance of the gifts to the district as listed.
So moved. Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions?
Thank you very much.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Recommend approval of the personnel items as listed, items 1A through H.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Sullivan, I'm sorry, Mr. Laddick, second by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions?
Just a comment. Hate to see Katie go. Katie's not here.
She was here.
I just hate to see Katie go.
Yeah.
She's done a fantastic job.
We wish her luck.
We do wish her luck. We wish her luck. She's going to a nice place.
With the inside information.
Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
One abstention, Mr. Schilling.
Student travel. We do recommend approval of student travel per item BA 11.
So moved. Motion by Mr. Kerr, second by Mrs. Murphy. Sorry, Steve.
I'll get the next one.
Any comments about student travel this evening? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Student travel is approved.
Recommend approval of contracts per item BA 12, copies of which are on file in the office of the Business Administration.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mr. Kerr. I want to make a motion, I'd like to take off the Beata nursing contract off of this. It's the first one on your list under BA 12, for an opportunity to explore this a little further as an alternative. I know this is funded by a special ed grant, so it's not really a direct cost to us, but I would like to have a little bit more information about the specifics in this contract.
Okay.
If anybody can, can I have a second of that?
I have a second.
All right, motion to approve, or to have the contract motion move forward with that removed. The table that portion.
Is...
That's what I'm asking for.
Can you share the reason for that?
Someone asked me to check into this further, and I want to check into this detail, this contract, because it didn't really come up in front of special ed as a committee. I want to know why.
I mean, we're not going to lose service if they're doing it in-house.
I won't, I won't, I'm not going to let that happen. I'm not going to have a problem approving it in, you know, forward, but I just want to make sure I understand that, what the details of the contract are. That's all.
Tim's question is, is a contract for service going to run out before we get a chance? Yeah, well, we don't want to let that happen.
We don't want to let that happen. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not trying to stop that, I'm just trying to find out more about it.
This is, this is a student who recently has developed a need for this service, and so this is not a...
Well, can I ask you this question then? Why are we going outside to get the services when we have people in-house that can do it? I guess that's really what my question was. Is there something unique to this?
We can, yeah, we can, we can discuss it. Yeah, it's...
That's fine.
It's a complex, it's a complex need situation.
I understand that completely.
So how do we make...
Should I withdraw that and move this forward, and then talk about this after the fact?
Is there any way...
Is that a problem?
No, it's not a problem.
Then I'll withdraw my motion, Frank. You want to withdraw your second?
I have a second.
All right, then I'll just pull that out, and we'll move it forward, but I do want to talk about this. Also, I'd like to announce to the public that I intend to have an executive session this evening after this meeting, for a matter of potential litigation.
No, it's a different matter.
Different matter, so stick around, guys, don't wander away.
All right.
Okay? All right, I apologize for that. Do I have a motion and a second for the first one still stands? As whole?
Can I just ask a question?
Go ahead.
We need the contract Monday.
We're approving it tonight. I withdrew my motion to withdraw.
Okay, but what if you don't like it?
Well, I'll vote against it. It's a big deal.
How do you know? Like, what if... If you're voting on it now.
Hey, I have no problem voting against something if I don't feel confident moving it forward.
Can't we modify it to say, based on your approval or something?
No, 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 no. Let's approve it, move it forward. I'm not going to stop the services to provide to the student. I just want, I want an explanation of why we're not doing it in-house, that's all.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not trying to complicate your life or anything here. I'm just trying to get an answer, a question answered, that's all. Usually when we do these types of services, it's done in-house. I just wanted to know if there's special needs that we are requiring, or something's going outside here.
It is, it's...
I don't want to get into too much detail at a public meeting, but it's a situation where there are some very complex needs for the student.
Okay, then I'll get my questions answered. So the motion stands as is, the provided services as is. Is that, everything's still there?
All the contracts approved.
All the contracts approved. That's what the motion is. All those in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. Let's keep going.
Recommend approval of alternative placements per item BA 13, copies of which are on file in the office of Special Education.
So moved. Motion by Mr. Laddick?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The vandalism report is included for your information. This does conclude the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Dietrich. I want to move forward with our finance report. Ms. Dickerson.
Yes, I'm here to present the Treasurers' Report for the period ending September 30th,
Move on to the Treasurers' Report. Go ahead.
Okay. I'd also like to recommend approval of the disbursements to be sanctioned for the September, for the month of September, 2012, in the amount of $11,111,427.33, and the disbursements to be approved for the month of October, 2012, in the amount of $3,221,922.78.
So moved. Motion on floor by Mr. Schilling, second by Mr. Laddick.